A happy, healthy 93rd year and for many, many more. Hopefully, we get them to that centurion level. All right, and at this time, we'll move right into our work sessions with our first one being from Mr. Ward.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. Actually, Kelly Davis, Deputy Director of Development, will be presenting your first work sessions.
All right, thank you, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, great, wonderful. All right, our first work session tonight is a zoning amendment request related to signage regulations in the City of Hopewell zoning ordinance. This is a brief agenda of the slide presentation, primarily a background, proposed changes to development standards and the B1 district standards, and then staff recommendation. This zoning text amendment is proposed to clarify regulations in the sign ordinance and address existing inconsistencies between districts, but primarily it is proposed in response to requests that we have had from businesses and property owners for different sign, particularly in downtown, but also in other districts as well. I think council has received some letters to this extent regarding the B1 zoning district, and it has also come up as a result of a community meeting that we had with downtown property owners with regards to the downtown design guidelines that are currently under development. I'm moving through this briefly, given the time today, but if there are any questions, I'll be happy to answer them. Within the development standards section of the zoning ordinance, we are proposing changes to freestanding signs. The first change is to modify the sign area and height requirements in the B2, B3, and B4 zoning districts. The B3 and B4 are the most intensive districts that we have, and the sign requirements in those districts are actually smaller than in B2, which is more of a neighborhood business district, like around Broadway and City Point Road. So we're making some changes to make those more consistent and appropriate for the districts. We've also had some requests along the Oaklawn Wood Lawn One Way Pair for an additional freestanding sign on those through lots. Council has approved some exceptions for that in the past, going ahead and codifying that, so if we get other businesses on through lots in that corridor, we won't have to come to council for each of those requests. They would be subject to the same requirements as other freestanding signs. We are also exempting small signs, four square feet or less, from the requirement that all freestanding signs be monument style. That's the style that looks like a box or a monument. There's two examples on this screen here before you, basically allowing smaller signs that might be just for a small business or singular business that are small, or for wayfinding signage to be less stringent requirements there. Also, adding additional standards for the base and foundation. We've had some questions as to those requirements in our ordinance, and so we're adding some clarifying language there. We are eliminating a requirement that is pretty stringent on height to width ratio, but instead of that, adding setbacks from the right-of-way to help drive some of the height and width requirements in a different way. Other proposed changes to general development standards for signage. We've started to see signs, this photo is an example, where window signage covers the entire window. Right now, there's an exemption in the ordinance to exempt temporary window signs. This is really more of a permanent sign, so we're clarifying that that exemption, so they don't have to have a sign permit to have window signs, but they can only cover up to 25% of the window. And that's really to help with public safety, being able to see into the building and for community appearance as well. And then, the final change to development standards is modifying and clarifying the awning sign area requirements. There's some existing potentially typos in the ordinance that are very difficult to interpret, and so we have clarified and made those restrictions more aligned with best practices for signage. In the B1 zoning district, that's our downtown zoning district, we are increasing the combined building signage, or proposing to, these are all proposed changes, to increase the combined building signage from 50 square, or, I'm sorry, those are mixed up. The current is 50, and we would be proposing to increase it to 75 square feet. Projecting signs, also increasing slightly based off of the linear feet of building front edge. These are specific inquiries that we have had from multiple property owners downtown for larger projecting signs. We're also making some changes to, or proposing changes to freestanding signage. The biggest change for freestanding signs, although the size is changing, is not requiring that monument-style standard because we'll have the added ARB review, and this is something that has come out of those community meetings, so that folks that want a smaller sign or a blade sign, like or a example in this photo here, would be allowed to do that, subject to ARB review. And then finally, we did add flags in the last zoning ordinance amendment, but we wanted to clarify that the flutter flags are not permitted in downtown, and that was something that ARB had requested as well. And with that, staff recommends approval as presented tonight, and Planning Commission has also recommended approval of this, and I'll stand ready to answer any questions.
Okay. Are there any questions for Ms. Davis? Okay, none? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'll go ahead and bring up the next item.
It's for another day?
Okay.
Yeah. Okay. Moving on to work session number two.
So, we're okay?
Yeah.
Are you prepared for me to start?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. All right, so the second request is for a zoning amendment to allow urban agriculture in the City of Hopewell. Again, the agenda for tonight, briefly. And the background here is that the City of Hopewell has initiated this, the Planning Commission initiated this request and directed staff to research how to allow urban agriculture here in the City of Hopewell in a byright manner. We've started to see some interest in this use throughout, in various parcels throughout the city, so we want to make sure that there's a pathway to do this legally. It is in compliance with the comprehensive plan to allow better access to fresh fruits and vegetables in the city, and so this was proposed as a way to do that. There are some challenges for urban agriculture that you all should be aware of as you review this ordinance. It is currently not allowed as a primary use, so if you see a community garden, it would be an accessory use. So we do allow you to have residential gardens or community gardens accessory to another use, but it currently is not allowed as a primary use. Other issues are related to fencing, accessory structures, water and electric service also tied to, you can't have if you don't have a legal use, as well as enforcement, primarily the current concern being that someone might fence a property for urban agriculture and actually try to use it for more of a junkyard condition. So we want to make sure we're not allowing any nuisance conditions through this use. So the first, we conducted a lot of research and actually didn't find very many good examples in Virginia, but we did find a few and came up with the idea of adding what Market Garden, which you might also hear as referred to as an urban farm or commercial garden. So I won't read this whole definition to you, but the thing to know is that this will allow cultivation of crops for sale or donation to public or nonprofit organizations, and it would also allow accessory educational activities and onsite sale and distribution. There are some additional definitions included that you should be aware of as well, or that you will see in the packet, but I'm not going to go into detail on these tonight. The Market Garden use would be proposed for byright in all business districts, and that is the B1, B2, B3, and B4 districts. There are also some significant use standards associated with that. This is an amendment to the development standards to add a new section, Section H, which would have use standards for these two uses. Some of the use standards shown here would be approval of a plan when they come to get their business zoning approval. There's limits on the buildings and storage that can be onsite, as well as limits on onsite sales. We have some standards related to composting soil and mulch storage, again, trying to prevent the accumulation of large amounts of these materials, to the extent that that becomes the primary use over the actual farm. And then, as well, we have included standards for maintenance and operations, including that you have to keep the site well-maintained and no exterior onsite equipment, tool storage, vehicle storage, et cetera. The second definition or use that is being added to the ordinance is in urban agriculture indoor. This is about best practice that we are starting to see in zoning ordinances to allow folks to conduct urban agriculture in buildings. This is proposed in all of the B districts and the M districts. And there are also some use standards proposed with this related to indoor uses, exterior storage, the keeping of animals, the control of odors, as well as in your commercial and mixed-use districts requiring a portion of those spaces to still include the retail services for walk-in customers, so you keep that activated storefront. And with that, I stand ready to answer any questions. Staff is recommending approval, and Planning Commission also recommended approval. And I do just want to note that the full ordinance, as it's drafted for adoption for both this and the previous work session, are included on the dais, as well as in the back for the public.
All right, are there any questions or comments from Ms. Davis, Vice Mayor Joyner?
Yeah, I do have one comment, and it just relates to the buildings. Just want to make sure that we don't have a situation, and I'm sure you're writing the ordinance to make sure we don't have, but, you know, a hoop house that is in use for a little while, and then they say, oh, well, I'm not interested in this anymore, and it looks awful, and the plastic is torn and flying all around. I mean, I think there are examples of that along Route 5, along virtually any corridor in the state where people, you know, they think they're going to have a nursery or whatever, and it doesn't work out. And I'm just very concerned about in the city, how it can go wrong.
Okay.
Yeah.
Particularly for those temporary structures.
Yes, yes, I'm very concerned.
I will definitely take a look and make sure that we've addressed that, or look at an amendment.
Yeah, I'd really appreciate that. Thank you so much.
The only comment that I have is, I think this is exciting. This is something, actually, that I saw a lot of when I was out of town in, you know, a lot of small towns on the West Coast, and it's very popular. And I think, you know, having an ordinance that allows this, that gives good defined parameters of which, you know, they can exercise this, I think is going to be an attractive draw for our city. But I do agree with Vice Mayor Joyner that we need to make sure that, you know, when we allow this, that we make sure that it's managed properly.
Exactly. And I do support this. I think it's great. It's great.
I'll also just note that we did meet with potential urban agriculture farms here in Hopewell to help, you know, review this and make sure that we weren't missing anything. So we got some good feedback through that process as well.
Appreciate that. Thank you so much, Kelly. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Seeing none? All right, we're going to move on to number three. Ms. Wilson with the executive summary for HRHA.
Good evening to Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. I'm Lisa Wilson with the Hopewell Redevelopment and Housing Authority, and on behalf of our Board of Commissioners, thank you for having us here this evening. For this brevity of time, we will be providing you with an overview of HRHA's operations, our vision, our strategic plan, and we will end it with some development updates. So I'll be doing the first part of the presentation, and the last part will be provided by our development consultant, Mr. Tavoris McCoy. And I do want to say good evening to our commissioners, thankful for their support, and our general counsel is here, Mr. Darius Davenport as well. So, thank you again.
Can she speak up, please?
Yes, I certainly can, yes. So if we could go back to the first slide, thank you. So we'll start off with HRHA's vision. It's called Vision 2030, and it was adopted back in 2013 by our commissioners. It was then revised in 2018, and it is basically the driver for what we do at HRHA. Our vision statement is to transform lives and communities by expanding access to housing and empowering our residents to thrive. And so we are working to achieve this vision, and we have some bullets summarized on the slide. So we're seeking to redevelop our public housing. We are wanting to demolish any obsolete units that we have. We're wanting to enhance our resident services, and we definitely want to try to expand any affordable housing opportunities in the city and even beyond. So moving on to the next slide. With Vision 2030, that's basically the framework and guiding principle for our strategic plan, which we have summarized here. So this slide highlights our strategic plan and what we're seeking to do over the next five years. These are specific milestones that we're wanting to reach, and we are definitely excited about working towards them. As you can see on the slide, we're looking forward to adding additional units to our portfolio, increasing our resident services enrollment, and as new units come online, we are hoping to see some energy savings over the next couple of years as we do some sustainable measures and have energy-efficient products incorporated into our development. With this, we also recognize the importance of financial stability, not just looking to HUD for our funding, but trying to diversify our revenue sources, and we definitely want to make sure we're maintaining our reserves to keep ourselves solvent. And again, we're seeking opportunities to grow our footprint in development. So we go to the next slide. I'm going to move on through, and after we're finished, if you have any questions, we'll be happy to answer them, if that's okay. All right, so this next slide, this is our operational snapshot. It provides an overview of the programs we currently administer, the number of residents we serve, and the cost to operate our organization. I will say that 82% of our operating budget is funded by HUD. The remaining portion, we have some state funding, tenant revenue, and other miscellaneous revenue that helps to support our operations. All right, moving on through. Yep, so this next slide provides examples of our capital projects. HUD requires every five years that we do what's called a physical needs assessment, and that's how we determine our capital funding, our capital planning, what projects we're going to work on, and how we prioritize them. So the assessment helps us identify what requires replacement, what requires repair, and in the order that we do that. The good thing about this is every year, we provide the PHA plan, and we make it available to the public, where you can make comments and provide edits, and really give input and feedback into our capital structuring. Some of the examples on the slide, we're working on modernization of our units, roof replacement as needed, we're replacing appliances now with energy-efficient appliances, and we're very excited about the capital plans that we have for the Housing Authority. All right, next slide, thank you. So this is, we wanted to share some photos of some of the units that we're working on. What we're doing now is we are rehabbing our Thomas Rolf and Davisville Apartments because we're committed to improving the quality of housing for our residents. With me being here in this capacity, I'm very intentional about wanting to replace and rehab units with new appliances, new countertops, new cabinets, new flooring, new paint. So every unit, as we are, you know, ramping up our occupancy, every unit will be rehabbed to look like what we see here. And this is an actual unit in Thomas Rolf, so we're very glad that we're able to do that. All right, the next slide, moving on down. So this is just a bit of information as it relates to our operations and maintenance. We have some time goals here for different maintenance requests, different service requests that come up from our residents. And what we're doing here is we're wanting to add systems and preventative maintenance measures, so we can improve our efforts with our maintenance services and to improve our upkeep with our aging units. Our units are quite old. Right? Move on to the next slide, and I'm just about done. This next slide, maybe is there one before that one, maybe? Oh, there we go. All right, so this slide here is just laying out some initiatives we have for communications, resident engagement. We do have some opportunity here, and these are just some things that we're planning to roll out to improve our way of conveying important information and to improve our engagement with our residents. We're really wanting to get feedback, so we can see how we can better serve our communities. These are just some examples here. We're doing newsletters. We're working on doing text alerts. We're wanting to reengage our resident advisory board, having bi-monthly meetings, and hopefully we'll get some really good feedback about resident concerns, so we can address them collectively. So that's what we're looking to do. And, yep, this slide here, this is just laying out our remediation plan for any health and safety concerns that we're running into on our properties. This ties a bit to what we're calling black substance. If there's anything identified within the units, we do have a plan in place. We do have a dedicated funding source to address this within our Thomas Rolf and Davisville communities. So we're very glad that we do have those resources to address that concern. Then we're coming on down to the end. I just wanted to let council know some real-time challenges that the Housing Authority contends with on a regular basis. I do believe understanding the context and the climate we're in as a housing authority is paramount to our operations, and it really informs our direction and strategic planning as we move forward. So with HUD's ever-changing regulations, political shifts, eroding funding, aging buildings, and resident landlord needs, we're making every effort to be adaptable, forward-thinking, and we definitely want to be aligned with our stakeholders as we move the agency forward. So we're committed to transforming housing and being the catalyst for improving our communities here in Hopewell, and we're seeking to do that in Hopewell and beyond. So I do want to thank you, thank you for allowing me to provide that information to you. And actually, that's the last bit of what I have for my part of the presentation. And if we go, probably have to go down quite a bit, all the way down to our development section, and I will turn it over to Mr. McCoy, yep, right there. I'll turn it over to Mr. McCoy, and then I'll come back if you have any questions you'd like to ask at this time. Thank you.
All right, good evening, everybody. Picking up where Ms. Wilson left off, been asked to just give a summary of the development efforts of Hopewell Redevelopment and Housing Authority. I'll first start off by just discussing the very kind of genesis of this. A few years ago, started working with the Housing Authority, and the first thing that was done was really to create this vision of, you know, talking about Vision 2030 that was shared, and talked about what does that mean for development. There was an understanding years ago that, you know, HUD was kind of moving in a direction that said there wasn't more public housing money coming. It just wasn't coming. And so with that being said, the Housing Authority began to redevelop its properties using other funding outside of HUD to do that. Most recently, Piper Square, which was originally built in the late 70s, was rehabbed, what we call a substantial rehab. It was a $23 million project, which resulted in completely new systems within those units, so new HVAC, new plumbing, new fixtures, new flooring, new lighting, you name it, top to bottom, really, working throughout the buildings, as well as assigning a new exterior to the building, so that, you know, those who were to drive through Piper Square today might not recognize it as it once stood. In fact, we often get asked, did we tear it down and rebuild it? We did not. And so, you know, next on that, this council would be familiar with, the Housing Authority has also been working toward development of the Rendezvous Apartments, which is located in Highland Park, Highland area of the city, near Cavalier Square. This would be a 64-unit development, and it's currently in the pre-development phase. Much of its funding has been secured and just looking for that last piece of the puzzle to get that one started. Other development is really in the early stages. Development, I'll say this, sometimes when we see new developments come online, it seems like it just kind of happens overnight, the physical part of it, but the reality is most development takes about five to 12 years, from concept to actual completion. And, you know, I think the work that the Housing Authority is doing is very similar to that. The Piper Square project is one that was, began in 2018, if I'm not mistaken, and of course, it was completed in 2024. So I always like to give people that lens to understand that there is a lot of work that's happening behind the scenes to bring those developments to fruition. And last, I'll say this, that this board also looked at the city and really is always asking a question of, you know, how can what the Housing Authority does work well with what the city has done? And one of those areas is in single-family. The board has also been looking at how can the Housing Authority work within the single-family side of things to bring more high-quality, single-family housing, you know, for-sale housing to the city as well. So, yeah, I'll leave it at that.
Okay. Let's see. The first person that I have for a question is Counselor Stokes, and then myself, and then Vice Mayor Joyner. Okay. Ms. Stokes, if you're, yep, okay. Yeah, you're on mute. Counselor Stokes?
Oh, I'm sorry.
There you go.
Are we unmuted?
Yes, you are unmuted now.
They got new stuff up here. I can raise my hand. Can you see me raise my hand?
No, ma'am.
That's what I was playing with, but at any rate, from the first presentation, what are the plans for the relocation of Davis? What is the timeline on the relocation of Davis? Is there any plans for that community?
Yep, that is a great question, Counselor. Yep, that is a great question, Councilor Stokes. And I will say, is to be determined the timeframe for when things will occur with Davisville. We're doing things kind of in a sequence. So we're working on getting the rendezvous online, which we're very excited about that. As Mr. McCoy alluded to, you know, we're working through some pre-development activities. Once we get the rendezvous online, that will give us the go-ahead to begin looking at our plans for Thomas Rolf and Davisville. So I don't have a timeframe tonight for when that will occur, but we are planning to have a well-thought-out, well-planned relocation plan for the Davisville residents.
But I thought some years back, that had already been put in place. And what has caused this slowdown with Davisville, Thomas Rolf, Porton, Denver on it?
Mm-hmm. Yep, so.
I mean, you just, you know, direct answer because the timeframe on it and where we at now don't match. So make it make sense.
Okay, all right, see if I can try. So as Mr. McCoy alluded to, when you're working on development projects, there are things that come along that you hadn't planned for. And, you know, you have a contingency plan where you may have to change gears. The timeframe may change, some things may have delays, you may have to redirect your focus. You may have to change what you had initially started to do. And it's just in the world of development that those are the things that we contend with. As far as the timeframe for Davisville and the relocation, I don't have a definitive timeframe tonight because we've had a series of delays and certain things that have impacted our development activities. So we want to make sure we have some clear, a clear path forward with the timeframe for Rendezvous and Thomas Rolf. And then we will certainly consider Davisville and the timeframe for that. So it will kind of happen in tandem, like these things will be coordinated together. But, you know, we'll definitely come back when we do have a solid definitive timeframe. I'll definitely come back and I can relay that. But just to try to land this plane, I will say that because we've had unexpected and different things occur with our other projects, our other development, it did have an impact on the timing for Davisville.
So do you have future plans of making sure that the members of this city council are kept abreast? Like maybe a 30 to 60-day report on where you at, where you are with the development of those plans so we don't have to ask these questions years later?
Yes, ma'am.
When we had a different set of expectations? And I wasn't on council then, but I followed as a constituent. And it gives me great concern, the changes. And you're not being definitive with the changes. But if you could keep us in the loop, we would be on top of what is happening. So when the constituents, the constituency, particularly public housing residents and our taxpaying people want to know what's happening, we'll, I thought they planned to do this. I thought this was going to happen by this date. If we had reports or some more communication from you, we'd be able to possibly answer our constituents, ma'am.
Okay, well, thank you for that feedback. And I do agree that there should be timely and relevant communication as it relates to our projects. So we're committing to keep council apprised of our updates and definitely keep you all in the loop because we want to continue building our relationship with the city so we can work on some additional projects. So we will be very intentional about keeping council abreast of what's going on. So that's a fair comment.
And I am your liaison, so I can keep them abreast?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I have two questions. The first one is, you talked a lot about, you know, the public side, public housing side of y'all's mission. But there's another side of y'all's mission in attracting new development and new housing, you know, here in the city of Hopewell. So what are your plans to take advantage of the second part of y'all's mission? And the reason I'm asking is because, you know, right now, we are continuing to, you know, focus a lot of our decision-making on making sure that we are doing things that are making us look better and better and better for our bond rating, for the bond rating agencies. And the two, two of the biggest factors in that is, you know, the city's overall value. So the value of all assets within the city. And then also looking at, you know, the housing stock. And then it also looks at, you know, median household income. Now, what are y'all's plans for addressing the new housing and development piece?
Yeah, so what we're wanting to do is, like I said, you know, we're working through some of these current projects. But what we're wanting to do is really engage the city. Since I've joined the Housing Authority in this capacity, I would like to have discussions, planning sessions, identify some areas within the city that could be really ripe for development and see, you know, how we could put together a project and deal to bring in the new housing. We do have some ideas, we discussed with our consultant, Mr. McCoy, about, you know, some areas where we could really build up some really nice projects, really nice developments. And it would include mixed use, possibly some retail. But we do have plans and would like to discuss those because, you know, ultimately, we would need the city or want the city's blessing to move forward in those areas. But we certainly are wanting to be very intentional about bringing new housing, new development to the city to help with the value and to help bring up the asset value and just the appeal and just the overall aesthetic of the city. So we're definitely wanting to do that. We do have some ideas, like I said, there are some potential areas and locations that we would like to discuss with the city, you know, in the near future, so.
Okay. Mr. Rogers, can you get with Ms. Wilson? And let's get a joint meeting between the HRHA board and city council so we can start talking about, you know, some of these developments and these projects.
Absolutely.
And let's shoot for, you know, October timeframe. No better time than the present. Then the next question that I have is, you know, I know that you guys have talked here, you know, about these new projects. You've talked about a little bit about the capital and the maintenance and improving operations. And I know that there's, you know, public safety and there's security issues, you know, within the housing communities. And then, you know, issues, I think, also with individuals living in units that are not on leases. Have you guys looked at bringing in or researching or considering bringing in a turnaround specialist that helps specialize in housing authorities to help you guys implement some, you know, best practices and help, you know, further y'all's mission?
Yeah, that's a great question, Mayor Parton. We are actually, we're actually in the process of procuring and bringing on a third party who specializes in exactly what you described.
Okay.
Unit terms, supporting our maintenance, and really having a dedicated resource to get our units online faster, better, and that kind of thing. So to answer your question, yes, we are.
Have you guys already issued out that RFP? Or have you guys spoken with the state on who's on like their pre-approval list?
I have not.
Okay.
I can certainly do that.
Okay. Because I think that that'll end up helping saving you a lot of time and a lot of vetting and working with the pre-approval list.
Thank you for that.
And then it also, they also have, you know, very high standards of quality that, you know, you guarantee that you're going to get good quality work from these individuals.
Duly noted. The folks we were talking to, you know, we were just looking around to see what kind of resources there are. This one company, they work, they currently work with about four other housing authorities. So we were looking at how to piggyback off of, you know, the existing contract with them. But I will certainly follow up with the state. That's Eva. I'll certainly follow up on that. Thank you.
Hold on one second. Go ahead.
Is my question period up, or I can still question?
You can, it's just you'll be on your second round, so I have to let all the other folks go first that have their hands.
Okay, dear, thank you.
Yeah, no problem. So next is Vice Mayor Joyner, then Councilor Day, and then Councilor Harris.
Yeah.
And then Stokes.
Ms. Wilson, thank you so much for your presentation. I do have a couple of questions. Going back to the communications plan that you had, can we go back to that and look at it? Could we get to that slide? The communications one? That one, right there, that one. How many of these things are in place right now?
So right now, the first one, we do have the newsletters.
Right, right.
We do have the RAD advisory board meetings, but they're only when we call them, like we'll schedule them.
You're going to set that up. How about the resident text alert system, is that in place now?
So we're working on that because, you know, we converted to a new ERP, it's called Yardi. And we're still learning their functionality. And we discovered that we have that functionality in our existing system. So we haven't done it yet, but we're certainly gonna, it's going to be next on our list. And then we do work with food distribution. There's a local organization that, you know, delivers food to our sites.
Okay.
And HRHA website portal, we're working on our website and portal now. We did a fresh facelift of our website, and we're still working to improve the portal.
Okay, yeah, I just would just like to say, I think that that's, this piece is really important. And I think probably leads to most of the customer complaints, quite frankly. The fact that people don't know what's going on, or they hear, they get misinformation, that kind of thing. So I think the sooner the you and the commissioners can make sure that this all is in place and working would be very, you know, very beneficial to you. The other question that I had relates to, and it might be something from Mr. McCoy. With regard to the rendezvous, you mentioned that about 92% of the funding, you have about 92% of the funding ready. The other 8%, how, what kind of dollars are we talking? And do you have confidence that, do you have confidence that you're going to get that, that other 8%?
Yeah, I have confidence in that.
I'm real glad to see you back. I mean, you know, because, you know, this would, we had hoped this was going to be, as I'm sure y'all did, this would have already been built by now if there hadn't been, you know, some waves. But we're really glad to have you back, working on the rendezvous.
Yeah, I'm happy to be back, thank you.
Good, good.
And yeah, I do, I believe that the rest of the, the last mile of funding is on its way. We had some really promising pieces that we worked on. The planning commission or the district planning commission has been really good. And we're on their list, they don't get funding every year, but they work with Virginia Housing.
I hate to cut you off. Thank you, Mr. Bissett, for this. Can I have a motion to extend the meeting until we complete the public hearing number four?
Second.
All right. Motion's been made by Councilor Day, or excuse me, Vice Mayor Joyner, seconded by Councilor Day. Any discussion? Seeing the lights, roll call please.
Councilor Harris?
Yes.
Mayor Parton?
Yes.
Councilor Ellis?
Yes.
Councilor Day?
Yes.
Councilor Stokes?
Yes.
Councilor Repole?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Joyner?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
All right. Good catch, Mr. Bissett.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson.
Such an exciting topic.
But I do have one other question, okay? Talk to, talk to us, you know, all your funding, most of your funding comes from HUD. What are you hearing in terms of, you know, changes to funding? That would be, yeah, and that's my last, this is my last question. Sorry, sorry for this. Thank you.
Yeah, so it's real interesting, you know, we're watching things very closely. And, you know, the thing that I watch is what's called the, you know, HUD does a proration of the funding. So every year they'll say, hey, you're eligible for 5 million. But I look at the proration percent because that's the actual amount we get. And I will say, for public housing, our prorated amount has decreased. Meaning, they said we'll get this amount, but the actual amount we get is much less.
Okay.
For our Section 8 housing choice voucher, it has been funded 100%. So that lets me know there is a desire and a wishing to maintain our, you know, housing choice voucher rental program.
But not.
Whereas public housing, that is not desirable, and that's just the truth.
Yeah, okay. I really appreciate, I think that's good for people to hear and understand what's going on. Thank you so much, we appreciate you coming, and thanks for the commissioners to be here, appreciate that.
Councilor Day, Harris, and then Stokes.
Hi. Hi. So I had a question about Piper Square. Are all the security cameras now working there? I know at one time there were some that were not. And, you know, this was being brought to me by constituents that were concerned that, you know, some of the crime might have been related to the fact that, you know, these security cameras were not working. And, you know, if they, there were crime there, that maybe having the cameras working, you know, might have led to finding out who was, you know, causing the crime. So I just wondered if all of those are now functioning that are there?
Yeah, that's a great question. It was unfortunate we had some incidents there. And at the time, there were some cameras that were offline, we had some electrical issues. We learned that during the redevelopment parts of our project, some of the wires were cut. And we had to have them repaired. So we've since had those repaired. Out of all of the Piper Square cameras, there's one camera that is still offline. And we had the manufacturer, you know, you know how you cry, you know how they say the squeaky wheel?
Right, yep.
So, you know, after my many months of crying and all of that, the manufacturer came to Piper Square, and the camera was defective. So we had to get it replaced.
So they're all working now, though?
No, it's still waiting on the one camera.
Oh, okay, okay. But other than that?
Other than that one, if we were to pull it up, you'd be able to see the majority of the property. So we did have an issue, but it's since, for the most part, been fixed.
Okay. And my last question, or question and comment. I think, I do think that the resident advisory board is paramount because I do, you know, a lot of the comments that I get, you know, are just feeling like they're not being heard sometimes by HRHA. When you have these meetings, are they on a Saturday, are they in the evening? Like, when are you doing these, you know, to make sure that, you know, people are able to attend and get there? And because I just think that's a really important piece of this communication panel that you have here.
Yeah, I agree. So with the resident advisory board, and a lot of these things are HUD-driven, HUD-required, there is an application process that a resident, like there's a formal, you know, there's a form you have to fill out if you're interested. And certainly, you know, any resident is welcome to join. Most of the meetings we've had, they've been during the day, during the week, during our business hours. The residents would meet and discuss the issues that were on the agenda. It's a formal meeting, you know, we have minutes, we record it and all of that. But I agree, and that's why we're wanting to, you know, establish a regular meeting schedule so that, you know, we're hearing from the residents, they're getting together, and we're having some real engagement so that we can, you know, keep their trust and, you know, have that comfort, so.
I do, I do think that's, you know, very important.
Agreed.
Thank you.
Councilor Harris?
Ms. Wilson? What is your concern about the problems that the residents are having regarding to recertification? Or are you receiving problem calls from people about recertification?
Yeah, so, excuse me, that is a very good question. And for some folks, recertification, that's just the process where our residents would come in and provide us any updates to their, excuse me, to their income or their housing composition or anything like that to determine if there should be any changes in their rent or anything like that. It normally occurs on an annual basis. And we have had some things, some things to work through with the recertification. And we have had some things, some things to work through with the recertifications. It's tied to a couple of things. We've had transition in staff. We've had turnover. We have the new system in place. So there's, you know, getting acquainted with the new system, getting our staff trained, and retaining staff. And as a part of that, we've had some challenges with recertifications. And, you know, not to say I've been on an apology tour, but we've been making every effort to rectify and make it right. And that's, we've made some progress, but, you know, we're still working to improve that.
Well, just want to comment, and I'm glad that you're seeking ways to try to, you know, to deal with that situation. Because we tend to receive a lot of calls here at the council level in regards to recertification, and other things in the, in the, in the housing that you have now. And that's a concern that, that I have myself in regards to the amount of conversation that I receive about situations that you have in housing right now. And one of them is the condition of the housing. And there's quite a bit of comment about the condition of some of the housing that they're living in. And it's not a day that go, go back to the entire seven-day week that I don't get a phone call from individuals out of housing talking about mold. And now, I understand that there's been another visit with residents concerning mold in Piper Square. And I was wondering if you were aware of, I just received a call just before this meeting tonight about mold in the buildings, the whole buildings, from maintenance people.
From our maintenance, I'm sorry, from our maintenance staff?
Yes, from the maintenance. And I was wondering if you were aware of it, you know? And I just wanted to make you aware of it, that that's the concern that's out there. And that's something I think that, you know, I think you're working to deal with, as you just said. I just think that we need to communicate a little bit better with the residents in regards to the fact that we are making an effort to get this thing fixed. Because now, you got individuals talking about health conditions and everything else that goes with it, if there is mold. And of course, over there in Piper Square, you got a whole lot of mold experts. So I just wanted that you know that you do. And so I, I'm glad that you're on top of it.
Yeah, thank you for that feedback, yeah.
Let me ask a question.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Wilson, you and I have worked on this situation. In particular, everything that's black in an apartment is not necessarily mold. You've had mold inspectors come out, and in some of the apartments where they've looked in, where people thought it was mold, and it wasn't, right? But let me ask. Throughout Piper Square, or any of the areas, do you have retained a contractor that does regular inspection for mold? Because it is a health hazard for people who have respiratory problems.
Yeah, that's a great question, and yeah, duly noted. So what we're doing, because, you know, we have Piper Square, and then we have our public housing side, Thomas Roth-Daviesville. So understanding and knowing the issues on both sides, we're taking our courses of action for each one, you know, as we need to. What we are gearing up to do on the public housing side is we will be procuring someone to come in and do an inspection of all the units. And then we will look at any remediation plans for the public housing side. Piper Square, because it is a different, the funding and the structure is a bit different. So we do have plans for Piper Square. As of right now, we're doing it on an as-needed basis. So as we are made aware of the concerns, we immediately have someone come out and do testing. But I do think it is a good idea to consider having some regular inspections with these units. So we're looking into that. But I will say, because the funding is different, we do have to look at our budgetary, you know, our resources to see how we can best do that. But what I want council to know is that it is very important to me, the health and safety of our residents. So it is my hope that we will continue to show that we are concerned and want to get these issues addressed as soon as we can, the best way we can, so that our residents do, you know, they are afforded the health and safety in their homes that they should have. So it's definitely our priority to do.
Okay. Ms. Stokes?
And I, I'd like to comment because I've experienced some, some discord. On, and, and I'm giving compliments to my fellow counselors because you're asking some very good questions. But one of the things that concerned me is, yes, we have to do the inspections, and we have to do all the things we're supposed to do. But you just can't bring in an out-of-town inspection company and expect me to allow a stranger in my house from Ohio. That's not gonna happen. And there's protocol before you even get there. That was not net. All right? And it, the residents, just as Counselor Day touched upon, have the right to communication. That's the reason HUD requires the resident council. Resident council jumps it off, public hearing, and we know who's coming in our home. But I know you gotta catch up inspections, but you've still gotta follow protocol and rules and respect public housing residents and anybody else. Nobody's gonna let a stranger in their home, I'm not, from Ohio, on a two-week notice, or a thirty-day notice, and that's not the rule. So there are things I know that has to be fixed before we can get to where we gotta get to, and the residents feel comfortable with our leadership.
Duly noted.
But thank you. And that's my comment.
Okay. All right, well, thank you, Ms. Wilson.
Thank you so much.
All right. And then Mr. Rogers will be reaching out to you on getting that joint meeting together. In the interest of Charles, for number four, can you condense your, your presentation?
We kinda know what's, what about, we kinda know.
So, and, and I am just the sponsor. Pastor Collier is here from City of Refuge to do, to do it. And so I'm just setting up the presentation for him.
Whoever wants to do, whoever does the presentation, because we're already at eight fifteen, and we haven't even gotten to the, to the regular meeting.
I'll be brief.
Okay. Says every pastor before sermon starts, right?
Famous last words.
Just to, just to set this up, if you remember last city council meeting, I did a work session with a model for religious community services in New Bern. When we came back from that trip, we have gone to a community meetings, OC three, we've been to the community center. And Pastor Collier and Pastor Boggs heard that presentation. They saw it, and it resonated with them. And tonight, they're here, he's here, Pastor Boggs is on, out of town. But to talk about what, what they would like to propose similar in Hopewell.
I'll try to condense it as, as quick as possible. Thank you for allowing us to be here to make this brief, you know, presentation before you. Obviously, we're City of Refuge, Hopewell. We run a recovery program for those that are struggling with addiction. We've been in the city since 2018. And we've come before you to present a proposal that we have to deal with an ongoing issue in Hopewell that's been addressed, that's been spoken of briefly, which is the homeless issue. So I'm trying to figure out how to move this, move this cursor, just tell me which one to hit.
Hit this here.
Okay, here we go. Hope Center missions and goals is to help to eradicate homelessness in Hopewell. That's a, that is, that is quite the feat. But, you know, we have a great opportunity to try to deal with the real issue here. And that is to arrest the slide into homelessness by our at-risk population. We want to encourage those that are struggling with this issue to a place of upward mobility, and to secure a location for a point of entry where we can actually speak to them and deal with them at a personal level. And also to help to provide a personal shelter as needed. And I'm still not getting this thing, page. I said page now.
Right this one.
Okay, here we go. All right. Presently, we're looking at our partners that help us to deal with this particular issue, which is obviously the police, the churches, hospitals, District Nineteen, HRHA, food pantry, and our local school system. And what we would do, we would gather clients' information and assess their present needs, and assign personal navigators to guide these individuals through the process. We would collect the information and report that data to those that are in a place that need to hear this information monthly. And we would maintain client files. Our goal is for twenty-five and twenty-six is to provide an overnight shelter, evening meals, and clothing, to have a center of administrative facility present. We're looking at City of Refuge literally moving our entire operation to the second floor of the St. James Church Educational Building. We would provide daily food and meal, meal distribution, and provide that with assistance from our partners. And we would have a clothing consolidated into a central facility where these individuals can get the necessary services that they need. What we would look at is developing something similar, I think, that was, was seen at New Bern, which was develop these pods that would present an opportunity for these individuals to find the services that they need to help them gather that upward, upward mobility. Mobility. First would be an education pod, which where they could pursue a GED, an ESL, VSU, Schools Continuing Education. There would be legal services pod, which would be pro bono legal support. There would be judicial process help. Many of our clients that we presently deal with, with the center, and many that are on the, you know, on the streets are dealing with legal issues and need some help there. There would be a housing pod, which would be landlords, supportive housing, and rapid rehousing, financial support, bankers, advisors, and financial classes. This is a goal. This is presently what's in place, but that would be what we would try to pursue. And then, obviously, we would try to find an employment pod for job training, research, and finding employee partnerships. Presently, the City of Refuge with community partners are addressing the need of meals. That we provide meals four times a week, and we have fourteen-plus local congregations and other partners that help to provide these meals. There are thirty-five to forty individuals that we serve in these meals nightly with, you know, wholesome food, food that's been prepared. We have partners that we have alongside, that are schools, employers, landlords, legal firms, banks, food pantries, and churches, obviously, to help us to meet that need. We have volunteers and professional staff that are working together to help to provide these services. And what, the benefit of this service is to reduce the homelessness, to strengthen the families, and to lower public cost. And our startup requirements, and I'm trying to go as quickly as possible, is to, you know, if we get the facility that we need, is to, you know, have these setup requirements met, to build, you know, to have a rental, utilities, shelter beds, linens, appliances, and furniture. Again, continue to provide the food services and clothing setup, equipment, support toolkits, and then obviously, transportation to get these individuals from one location to another as needed. And ultimately, what we hope to arrive at, which would be, you know, joining together with the city, with the community, with churches, with all of their entities, is to provide a process, because that's really what we need. I know that there's a real major concern about, you know, how do we address this homeless issue without giving some type of solution in terms of what we can do for these individuals? There's really no hope of moving them unless you have some sort of process to provide for them. Now, I know there's a lot of different issues that we're dealing with, with this population. We deal with a similar kind of scenario as we're dealing with people that are struggling with addiction. So, you know, we'd have to layer there. We'd have to get, you know, that financial support. Obviously, when you're trying to provide, provide services, there is a financial need there. We need the funding, the city partnerships. And again, partnerships with businesses and other locations. And we need to have a more permanent solution to the housing issue. Not just providing shelter, but also providing a transitional option for these individuals to move from the shelter to a more permanent residential support system. We don't know what that looks like. We have a projection, we have an idea. But this is, again, the beginning of the process. And it's a matter of working together. And I guess said all of that to say this. We all want solutions, but solution does not come from one entity. That's what we've learned in the City of Refuge. We need partners. We need people in the city working with us. We need private industry working with us. We need churches and faith-based organizations working together collectively for the need of those that we're trying to serve. Now, ultimately, you all know that a rising tide rises all boats. And so if we can help these individuals find that, you know, the support that they're needed, and some of them need mental health assistance, some of them need job training, some of them just need an opportunity to see that there is a hope beyond their present circumstances and situations. We believe there's a model there that if we pursue, with the assistance of others coming alongside of us, that we can make a difference. You know, eradicating homelessness, that's a lofty goal. But we can start the process, and that's what we ultimately desire. And I know this council desires as well. So that's sort of in a nutshell, very quickly, trying to be honoring of your time. I'm willing to, you know, take any questions if you have any tonight. But thank you again for letting us present this to you tonight.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Pastor Collier?
I just have a comment. I'm just, I'm very excited about this.
Can they see me?
I'm so excited to see something, you know.
They gotta raise hand button.
They're coming together now, so this is great.
Counselor Stokes, did you have anything that you wanted to say?
Oh, I thought. Can y'all hear me?
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
Do you have any comments on, on this?
I, I did. I didn't know whether, I'm sitting here, I told you this new stuff over here. But I'm sitting here trying to, okay, just let me know when I can speak.
Now.
Now?
Yes.
Okay. I'm, I'm impressed with what I've heard tonight. I'm really impressed with the coordination of the different services and the landlords, and the feeding, and the, that's very impressive. And so I just wanted to make that comment. Thank you, City of Refuge, for the work you've put in. And just looking forward to working with you and the different projects that you have planned for this. This is something I'm very interested in.
Thank you, Counselor Stokes.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Pastor Collier.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay. Our last one, Mr. Bissett.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So what we have here is a proposed, it's kind of an omnibus ordinance that would bring together in our Code of Ordinances nuisance. Right now, in our code, we only have nuisance for the purpose of grass and weeds. Otherwise, we don't have a public nuisance ordinance within the City of Hopewell. And, you know, as I was going to draft that for council's consideration, I noticed that there's this whole list of related items, criminal blight, spotlight, derelict buildings, inoperable vehicles, that are all in many cases, old, using old-fashioned language, being unclear, but also just existing all over in the Code of Ordinances. And so this would, besides creating a nuisance ordinance beyond grass and weeds, it would modernize the it would modernize the other ones and bring them all together in the same place in the city code of ordinances. And the reason why you would want them to all be together is that these are all different ordinances, tools that are used by and enforced by typically the same individuals, like the, the building inspector and the, and the, and the zoning inspector. And so that's why, you know, anyone looking for any of these, like if, if the zoning inspector is bringing a case in court, oftentimes what we're bringing is a case that has a little bit of zoning violation, a little bit of inoperable vehicles, a little bit of something else under this ordinance. So that's the reason to, to bring them all together. I will say with the nuisance ordinance as recommended here in this draft, it would give the ability for not only the Director of Public Works zoning, but also the building official, the chief of police and the fire marshal to pursue nuisance enforcement where needed.
Okay. Yeah, that was just the biggest thing that I just wanted to make sure is that we are putting teeth in here where, you know, we haven't really had it in the past, that, you know, we can remedy a lot of these issues that are chronic across the, the city.
Yeah, absolutely. And, I mean, public nuisance is a big tool that localities have and it's, it's available to us here in the City of Hopewell. We just haven't taken advantage of it.
Thank you, Mr. Passett. Are there any questions for the city attorney? Okay, seeing no lights. Thank you. All right, now we're going to go into our regular meeting. I'm going to go ahead and call this meeting to order. If you have a roll call, please.
Mayor Parton.
Here.
Vice Mayor Joyner.
Here.
Counselor Harris.
Here.
Counselor Ellis.
Here.
Counselor Day.
Here.
Counselor Stokes.
Here.
Counselor Repole.
Here.
We have a call.
Okay. At this time, we'll have the prayer by Pastor Collier, followed by the pledge of allegiance by myself. Please rise.
Let's bow our heads. Father in heaven, we just come before you today in need of your guidance and your wisdom and direction. We thank you for the city council and for the work that they're putting in, Lord, to help this city. We pray, God, grant them wisdom, grant them guidance and discernment on the things they should do and upon those things they should not. And I pray, God, that you would bring unity to this council, bring unity to this city so that those that they serve, God would be able to receive all that they have need of. We ask your blessings upon this time, and we ask it in Christ's name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there a motion to amend the regular meeting agenda to move the city manager report to in front of the information and presentation section?
So move.
Okay. Uh, motion's made by Vice Mayor Joyner and seconded by Counselor Ellis. Is there any discussion? Seeing no lights. Roll call, please.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Mayor Parton.
Yes.
Counselor Ellis.
Yes.
Counselor Day.
Yes.
Counselor Stokes.
Yes.
Counselor Repole.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Joyner.
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Okay. At this time, is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
So move.
I'll second it. Any discussion? Seeing none. Roll call, please.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Mayor Parton.
Yes.
Counselor Ellis.
Yes.
Counselor Day.
Yes.
Counselor Stokes.
Yes.
Counselor Repole.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Joyner.
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Okay. Mr. Rogers, the floor is yours.
Chief Taylor has his monthly report. Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Good afternoon, Madam Vice Mayor, members of city council. I'm here to give you the September crime summary. And our first slide is crime stats, and these stats are through August the thirty-first. And murder rate, robbery and aggravated assaults. We had sixty-three in two thousand and twenty-four. We had sixty in this year, so forth. So we're minus three, which were violent crime, we're, right now, we're down minus five percent. But let's go back to, I want to talk about the murders. And you see in twenty twenty-four, we have four. And on your slide tonight is showing five. But since this report was done, we had an additional homicide, which takes our total to six. And the eight-hundred block of Chestnut is still under investigation. We're looking at it was not a random act. We're getting all the facts together to, hopefully, we can bring whoever was responsible for justice. The recent homicide on Raleigh Street. Fortunately, we was able to make an arrest in that incident within twenty-four hours of it, of it being reported. So overall, we have six, but we have made tremendous strides in making arrests on the persons responsible for these homicides. The other one that I want to focus on was the robberies. Well, you see in twenty twenty-four, we had three, and twenty twenty-five, we had twelve. And as I've reported previously, these are, there is no individual patterns or group or individuals. These are individual robberies that things are being stolen from bikes to phones. And we had an incident where a juvenile even stole a car from a neighbor and he was caught and arrested for it. So we're, we're looking into these individual robberies and doing what we can to solve them. I'm here to report, you know, in the past, the aggravated assaults had been going up. I'm reporting that we had a minus twenty-two percent in aggravated reports, aggravated assaults, I'm sorry. So that's good news. And going to arson, burglary, larceny, motor vehicle thefts, property crime, I mean, the total of property crimes, it was a total that we are down minus twenty-six percent. Arson, we had three. It still remains at three. Burglaries, we had twenty-two. We're down eighteen, minus eighteen percent. Larcenies was two hundred and one in twenty twenty-four, a hundred and seventy-four in twenty twenty-five, which is minus twelve percent. So we're minus twelve percent and also on the larcenies. And a good thing to report is the motor vehicle thefts, because that was one of the major issues that we had in the past. And I'm happy to report that motor vehicle thefts overall are down minus sixty-five percent. Our property crime, crime total, minus twenty-three percent, and total major crime is minus twenty-three percent. Moving on to my next slide, this is the opiate overdoses. I'm still happy to report that since we started reporting these incidents and from twenty twenty through twenty twenty-five, we are in the lowest opiate fail or non-fail incidence that we, when we started reporting this. So that's a good thing. Verified shots fired. Twenty twenty-four, we had thirty-three, and twenty twenty-five, we had thirty-nine. As I continue to reiterate that once we get these calls of verified shots fired, we go back in the area, we knock on doors, the next day we do outdoor road calls, knock and try to get as much information we can from neighbors to find out who is responsible for them and also any forensic evidence that we can collect. So we are always looking at how we can reduce these verified shot calls. Neighborhood watch meetings, I'm going to want to talk about these because I want to talk about National Night Out. And I want to talk about, you know, we got, we got City Point, we got Farmingdale, we got Cobblestone, we got Kipax, we got Ward Seven, Ward Three, Ward Two and Ward Four. And the reason why I mentioned these, because I'm going to talk about National Night Out because I want, because we, we're going to have this at the community center. And I want to get the information out that all these groups that are, that I'm just reporting that they show up. And we want to get the information out that they come out for National Night Out. And my next slide on hiring recruitment, currently, we have twelve vacancies and two dispatch vacancies. The two dispatch vacancies was because we increased staffing to increase it to two additional dispatch positions that we're trying to fill. Four uncertified recruits are still in the academy. They started July the seventh, and they will be graduating December the nineteenth. Hopefully, we'll, all four will graduate. Recruitment team will be going to Bright Point Community College on September seventeenth. And they also will be going to Virginia State University for safety day on September seventeenth as well. And under the background investig, and background investigation, we have thirteen applicants, including one pre-certified, and two dispatch applicants are in the process. And all, August the thirtieth, we had an all-day testing event that was held at Creator Academy. We had twelve candidates that participated and five candidates passed. Next slide. And you can go to the next slide. Downtown community engagement. We're continuing our foot patrols downtown, our business checks downtown, continue to interact with our citizens and business owners downtown. The Beacon Theater overtime that we had was scheduled for September the fifth. We're continuing traffic enforcement on East Randolph Road and also Appomattox Street. And that's continued by the police and sheriff's department. And our bike patrols are scheduled, we had some scheduled for the month of September, but after this month, we will discontinue the bike patrols because that was focused on the spring and summer months. And we will do bike patrols, doing special events and on special occasions until spring and summer. Community engagement officers, we continue to have him attend the HRHA commissioners' meetings. Every monthly meeting is that he, he attends and share information with HRHA staff. National Night Out back again October the seventh from five PM to eight. And we're going to have it at the community center. The police department will be having the grill out. We'll be cooking hot dogs. We will have our booth set up. We'll be giving information, giveaways and other items there for our citizens. Also, this event, we're working on getting this out on Facebook. We have a flyer out this week. And my focus is I want to get out, get with my community engagement officers to talk once again to the block captains, to make sure they inform of the date and time and, and get a gauge of how many citizens in their wards will be participating. And then we're in the beginning stage of a business watch group. And our community engagement officer has been working with city staff, and they started out in the west side of the city.